Good evening. Seeing the time has arrived and that we have quorum, the chair opens up, the Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. Our meeting is being held at Mashpee Town Hall, Recore Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We're being broadcast live on local channels eight and 1072. This meeting will be recorded and rebroadcast. It's being streamed live on Mashpee website, the Town of Mashpee website, which is www.mashpma.gov backslash channel dash eight. So I'd like to invite everybody to stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So before we go to our regular business, we do have a guest today regarding, is this regarding a new business item?
Yes.
And which one is it?
It is the proposed warrant article for stormwater management amendment.
And do we have that in our packet?
You have hard copies as an addendum to your packet.
And is it this 174-27?
Yes.
Point two, okay. And does it pertain to the M A, M S A general permit?
I think that's MS four is what you're reading.
Okay, so we have a consultant here with us. So from, sent over from Catherine Laurent of DPW. So I'd like to recommend, I'd like to recognize you. Please introduce yourself and bring us through this item.
Sure, my, is the white good?
I would bring it just a little closer because everybody at home really wants to hear everything you're gonna say.
Good evening, thank you so much. My name is Gabrielle Balfour. I'm a senior consultant with Tyne Bond. I've been working with the Town of Mashpee for the past 10, 12 years or so on stormwater management with Catherine Laurent. And the reason we're here today is to let you know about a process that needs to happen within the town to update the local code to meet some of the provisions of the Massachusetts, I'm sorry, the U S E P A general permit for small municipal separate storm sewer systems. That's the MS four in Massachusetts. That general permit that we're talking about was effective July 2018. And then modifications were added to the permit effective January 2021. Together, the new general permit has additional and enhanced requirements that are over and above those from the 2003 MSG permit related to controlling construction site stormwater runoff as well as post-construction stormwater runoff. Back in 2020, Tyne Bond reviewed Mashpee's regulations and we proposed some revisions to both the general bylaw and zoning bylaw to come into compliance with these new additional regulations from the updated permit. Code revisions were originally due to be enacted by July 2021. Edits to the general bylaw 84-4 were completed relative to construction site control. However, the required revisions to the zoning bylaw on post-construction never got completed. So this kind of went into the back burner. There was some bylaw review committee that our recommendations went to, and I'm not 100% sure of that exact history. So what has ensued recently is in April, EPA did an audit of Mashpee's bylaws and had it, we had a call with them discussing non-compliance with the general permit, specifically the post-construction requirements. We discussed a plan for completing bylaw revisions and that is going to need to go before town meeting by October 2025 in order to avoid any penalties from EPA. So the town informed EPA that the revisions would be finalized in July in order to meet the required schedule for town council review prior to the October town meeting. So that's kind of the history of what happened and where we are now with this administrative order before us. So you have a lengthy packet, which was the original memo that I wrote in 2020 and updated it to reference the completion of edits to the general bylaw and just some, some general language to kind of bring the memo a little bit up to date. And the bottom line of what we're going to need to have happen in the new zoning bylaw is some minor amendment language related to including LID in both construct, development and redevelopment review, unless it is infeasible. There is no reference right now to redevelopment in that section, so we have to add that provision. There is currently no reference to phosphorus removal, which is now required to address specific water body impairments. There, we need to update reference to the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook as amended. And the kind of one of the major, it's not major, but it's a little bit different, is performance standards in the updated mass, sorry, in the updated general permit is more stringent than the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. So you can't just reference the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. So in our red lines, as awkward as it is, we've included those specific performance standards that are over and above the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. And then some minor formatting suggestions for just reading these. The, in your packet, I believe it was attachment number four, uh, number five, six? Which attachment was, there was a lot of attachments here. It was attachment six. Those are the specific red lines and there's some comments there.
I think this was, is this it?
We, we placed the red lines on the tops just to cut to the.
Yeah, I, I'm not really good at knowing how to do that. So some, I'm gonna have to get a little bit of guidance about, I just literally put them in red.
No, 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 on our packet, on our table, it's a different order than what you have.
Oh, I thought you said, oh, how I.
The attachments to your email are ordered slightly differently.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
We decided since what's ultimately before this board is the red lines to the bylaw.
No, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It looks like this.
Yes.
It's to the right of your packet, Karen. Your, your packet, you had supplements from the one that you picked up on Friday and there was a purple sticky on the top. Yeah, but it would be, no.
Five pages.
It was, it was the extra papers to the right of your packet.
Yeah, so those, so you can see that those, those items that I mentioned are really what we're looking at, the LID.
So do you have a clean copy of this? Do you have another copy of this? Karen really doesn't have it.
They, they were there, Karen. You shuffled them. I, I put, I placed them there myself, but here's an extra copy. I, I placed them there myself. They were there.
It's like a black hole over in Karen's corner and she keep, I'm sorry, this is.
Oh, no, 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 that's, that's okay.
There you go. That's what we're looking, looking for, is, is this red line. Okay, all right, continue.
So you can see that, you know, we've included redevelopment. We've included adding phosphorus. We've included adopting LID, unless infeasible. We talk about referencing the 2008 Massachusetts.
So could I ask you for just, just like three minutes for me to finish reading this and then we'll go paragraph by paragraph?
Oh.
Is that okay? Because I haven't read this, so hold on, let me just.
Oh, sure.
And then, and exactly what you're doing, we'll, we're gonna do.
Oh, okay.
So, and while she's doing that, I am gonna make a few requests.
Yes.
The first is from either yourself or Catherine, Catherine Laurent, to have this placed into a warrant article format.
Okay.
By July 14th, I believe is the deadline for that. If you wish, you can send it to us, you know, ideally a week ahead of time. So if you can get it to us by the seventh, we'll then get it over to the town manager's office. The second is to have either you or Ms. Laurent or both come to the actual public hearing that we have to discuss this.
Yes, absolutely.
The third would be to have a red line copy that actually like uses the red line features of Word. So if you could take verbatim our bylaw, copy and paste it from the PDF or convert the PDF to Word, whatever you need to do. Hand type it out, you know, but if, as long as it's exactly word for word, our bylaw.
Yes.
Then go over it with the red lines.
And then.
So the way to do that, that's like easiest for everybody is if you go up to like the review tab on Word document and then you click on that and then you click track changes and it'll just automatically do it.
Yep, no, I do know how to use track changes. I just.
If you, if you want to have a side conversation, that's fine.
Sure.
We're reading.
Okay, sorry.
There's a fourth page too, Karen.
There's what?
There's a fourth page.
Yeah, I got it.
So I believe they've pulled the, I believe the 174-24B is not before us now. They've pulled that.
Okay.
We're just looking at 174-27.2.
Correct.
All right, so let's, let's go from the top. So, section 174, 27.2, stormwater management. So that's where you have the word, you're adding redevelopment.
Yes.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, so we love that. I think that's fine. Do we have that defined?
Yes. It is, there is the language from the permit in the package. It's on page.
And so is that definition gonna go into the bylaw, the zoning bylaw? Because it should.
Yes, redevelopment is defined as any construction land alteration or improvement of impervious surface resulting in a total earth disturbance equal to or greater than one acre and activities that are part of a larger common plan of development disturbing greater than one acre.
So then what you'll probably want to do is either at the end of this or in our definitions section, you know, so if you do it at the end of this, you could just do it as a subsection D that says for the purposes of this bylaw, section 174-27.2, the term redevelopment shall be defined as, and then insert that wording.
Okay.
Or you could do it in the definitions section, but that may cause problems for us in other areas of the bylaw. So I'd rather you just keep it in this section.
I agree.
Okay, that's D, right below definition.
Now, I think staying with that first paragraph, I think low impact development is defined in our bylaw. It's used in other places in the bylaw. So you just want to make sure that definition is the same definition that, that you want to use. I don't have the whole bylaw with me, but.
And I don't, there, I don't have the entire permit with me, so.
So we just want to make sure that the low impact development, just like Brian said, is defined.
Yeah, and the bylaws are available in searchable PDF form on our webpage. Just make sure you pull the 2024 ones. And if you just do a search for the word impact, you'll be able to see.
All right, that's good.
I don't have any other comments in the first paragraph.
What do you, what do you mean by other pollutants? I mean, they're gonna test for nitrogen and phosphate unless you tell them.
The only language, this is your bylaw. Currently, the only language I'm proposing to change is, is the red.
It's already in our bylaw.
So if you already have it, you know, that was.
I just, I just leave it.
But, but.
I like to say it, but I like to know, because when they go all tested, if it's not something that's on the bills, you know, the testing slip, they're not gonna test for like medicine in the water. There's a lot of other things that could be in the water, oils.
That makes a lot of sense. I think the, probably the reason for the generality of that phrase is as industry practices change, you know, it allows for, you know, if it becomes standard to test for another thing in addition to phosphorus, it just allows for that interpretation.
Okay, I asked for that years ago, that they should be testing for more than the, you know, phosphate in the lakes and then nitrogen, you know, all over. Right here. And then it's again, and, and it's in back here till right here when we get to it. Did it change the main here to contaminant?
Well, Dennis, if you think there is something else that we should test for, now may be a good time to just insert it into the bylaw, change it all in one shot.
I, I'd like to test for medicines because people throw away a lot of medicines, you know, down the drains or in their septic and it gets into the groundwater. It has side effects on people that, you know, for the water and drinking the water and stuff.
This is storm water though. This is storm water though.
Oh, this is storm water?
Yeah, this is storm water.
All right, so maybe I'm jumping.
Along those lines though, I did notice, you know, and this is just doubling back to the general points I made at the beginning while folks were reviewing the red lines is, you know, when you ensure that you're building off of a exact copy of our code, it'll catch things like this. But like, for example, in the one, two, three, fourth line down, about halfway through that phrase, which is designed to achieve the following purposes, is not actually in our code. So that should be removed, but you know, what I, again, my preference would be, take the actual code, you know, simple copy and paste job and then use the track changes feature so we can make sure we don't accidentally add anything or otherwise delete anything by accident.
I mean, this was taken, this was done in 2020.
That may be why.
So, yeah, so, yeah. I had, you know, I had little time to get this little update done. I was planning to have a lot more time.
Right, right, so we have the 2024 code online.
Yes.
Searchable form.
Okay.
It's updated.
So what are the, so what are the other major pollutants in storm water that aren't listed here?
So we're only looking at what do you need to do to get in compliance with the general permit? And you need to, you need to be looking at addressing in your design of your stormwater management system, you need to address nitrogen and phosphorus and total suspended solids. Those are the three things that you need to address. And how you address them is through the engineering design. Certain types of systems, they have standard tables for what their pollutant removal capacity is. So there's not actual water quality testing going on. It's all based on standard operating procedures and the best management practices for the different types of system designs. And EPA is stating you need to address nitrogen, you need to address phosphorus, you need to retain one inch of runoff, you need to remove 90% of total suspended solids on new projects. And for redevelopment, you need to address nitrogen, phosphorus. You need to retain 0.8 inches of runoff on site and you need to address 80% of total suspended solids. I think I got that right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nitrogen and phosphorus comes from the houses, like washing machines brings the phosphate. It goes in your septic system.
Yes.
So you're talking about the septic system, so.
No, we're talking about nitrogen and phosphorus is also coming from runoff, from lawn runoff, from road runoff.
fertilizer.
It's that, we're not talking about septic systems. So it's just, it's just those stormwater systems like a rain garden or detention basins or deep sump catch basins, gravel filters, the whole slew of different types of stormwater management techniques are capturing, filtering, intriguing those nutrients. A plain old catch basin with nothing added doesn't do, doesn't do catch.
All right, so I'm, so A, so I think we got past A.
Okay.
Anything in B?
It looks good, E1.
Two, I just wanted to make sure that somewhere or another it, you know, EPA is written out for people at some point in the bylaw, or I don't know if it is.
Yeah, agreed. I also, I don't know, I, I prefer to say the EPA, but I mean, maybe that's too colloquial, but I think it's a little more reader friendly. But if that isn't industry practice, then disregard that comment. Also on two, the place where or redevelopment is leaves it ambiguous as to what kind of redevelopment we're talking about. So if there's a way to wordsmith it, so you say something like for new or redeveloped single two-family residents or say for new or redevelopments of single family, single comma, two-family residences. But with having or redevelopment at the end, unless you intend to have it be for all redevelopment, it's not limited in that paragraph to just the single two-family residences.
So A covers new residential, non-residential, or redevelopment of any type.
Right.
Okay, so A is just talking about residential.
So I think then if that's the case.
I think you're right to move for new or redeveloped. Yeah, I think it goes in there. It goes in before single. Good point. That works.
Okay, if we're done with two, first part of three and 3A.
Well, I have a question about inserting three. That, so the number three there is the only change and the, and the black ink is already in our code?
Yes.
Okay, let's just confirm that with the 2024 because I want to make sure otherwise.
Okay.
There may even be some sort of typo or glitch in our current code that you may be fixing there. So let's just take a look at that. Because otherwise, I worry that if the subparts A, B, and C and then the I's, you know, the Roman, lowercase Roman numerals under subpart C.
Yeah.
Are in fact intended to modify two, then the insertion of three may be problematic.
Yeah.
So we may have to do, also look a little into the code history there because I think there's something a little, there may be an area of concern just in our, in our current code there, that's all.
That's a good point.
Okay, and then what we have numbered now, 3A. So what do you mean unless infeasible?
This is directly from the general permit. That's the language, low impact developments. Site planning and design strategies must be implemented unless feasible, unless infeasible in order to reduce discharge of stormwater from development.
And do they have like standards to?
What constitutes unfeasible?
It's up to you to decide.
Okay, thank you.
It used to, the language before those modifications were in place, it used to be LID must be used to the maximum extent feasible. And now it's LID must be implemented unless infeasible.
Makes sense. I'm just thinking though to Mary, I think one of the things you may be picking up there indirectly as well is the unless infeasible is supposed to modify the LID planning and development strategies, right? So maybe it makes sense to put that phrase right after.
Strategies.
Strategies, exactly.
Exactly, okay, we'll do.
All right.
And then also utilize the site planning and building. And maybe also, well, so you're saying including LID. I don't want to overanalyze this at the public hearing too much or at the public meeting too much, but I'm almost thinking too because like these such as examples were intended to just be general site planning and building techniques, not examples of LID planning and development. So maybe you also just put all of that red ink. So maybe you also just put all of that red ink beforehand, you know, and say utilizes LID planning and development strategies as well as site, you know, unless infeasible as well as site planning and building techniques such as minimizing impervious services, blah, 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 blah. You see what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm looking again at the wording from the permit is actually site planning and design strategies, not development strategies. I don't know if that's a nuance there.
Oh, from the permit, you're saying?
From the permit.
Okay, well, so the red ink that you added was including LID planning and development strategies.
Right.
And you're saying in the permit it says what?
It's actually design strategies.
Planning and design strategies?
Yeah.
Yeah, so why don't, so we'll obviously change that.
Okay.
Put unless infeasible after that and put utilizes LID planning and design strategies unless infeasible as well as site planning and building techniques such as, so all our black ink stays together in your red ink, except for utilizes, and your red ink is right there.
As well as site planning. Sorry, you said as well as site planning.
And building techniques, and then it's just the rest of our black ink.
And building techniques such as.
Yeah.
Okay, I like that.
All right.
Okay. Don't think we should touch A now that, you two are, have settled that. Okay, B, anything, B, C? I just wanted to know if BMP was defined somewhere, that's all. If everybody's going to understand that.
I will add that to the list of things to make sure that they are defined.
Okay. Now, this first inch thing, right? So, so, so we try to, we try to treat the very first run, runoff, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so you struck something up, but you've replaced it with something better, right? It's not like you eliminated that, that's still somewhere in here, this one inch. It's to be sized to retain the runoff volume from their catchment area equal or greater than one inch, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it's 90% of total dissolved suspended solids, 60% of the phosphorus. Oh, I see, 60% of the phosphorus. Does it have the nitrogen? Am I missing it?
No, it, it isn't, they do not. I believe that. The place where phosphorus is being addressed is right here in the general permit. Where nitrogen is discussed is in the appendices that are specific to the nutrient impairment, which is appendix F and G. And now you're asking me to go back and read my memo. I will double check that.
Yeah, just double check.
Double check that, yeah.
If, if we're supposed to be, put a percentage on the nitrogen.
Yeah, and again, as I said, I pulled the language from the modified permit, which is looking at TSS and average annual total load of, of total phosphorus. And typically, when you look at BMP removal, if they, a system is going to be removing, nitrogen is going to be removing phosphorus, they're generally, and they're just nutrient reductions.
Yes.
So they just talk about nutrient reduction.
Right.
So it's very likely the percentages are the exact same, but I'm going to double check.
Yeah, and just to skip down to 4A, that would be another spot. If there is a percentage of nitrogen removal, we should put them in both spots.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a minor scripners error there in 4A with the comma in line two, so.
On which, where are we at?
4A, line two.
Stormwater handbook space, comma?
Yeah.
There's a space after, before the comma.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, that is minor.
And there's one after the comma, too, but you can keep that one.
Okay.
You like that one.
All right, so, so any other comments on 3CI? I don't have any other. Okay, moving on to four.
What was, what was the load reduction of phosphorus before this was written? Do you know?
It didn't change.
It did not change.
Okay. And then for four is for redevelopment, which we have a, we know we have a definition that will be added, and so these percentages are, are a little bit different. They're a little bit lower. I don't have any comments on A. And B, there's a lot of like letters, just as long as, is people reading this and the building commissioner is going to be able to figure out what those are.
Yeah, I, I, you know, kind of hesitated putting in reference to the general permit, but then if you don't, you have to add more language back in. So it was kind of like a.
Yeah.
You know, trying to strike a balance of having the detail in here, but not too much detail, so.
Do you have a definition page?
Pardon?
Do you have a definition page?
Well, we're going to add.
Yeah.
Let's put change to this.
But I think, I think Mary's idea at the, at the beginning is a good idea, like with EPA, the first time it's mentioned, just say Environmental Protection Agency.
Yeah.
BMP, the first time it's mentioned, you can just say best management practices, and then after each one, you know, you would put the acronym in parentheses after the first time it's mentioned, you know, with, with little things like that where it's like, you don't need to define the EPA, you know, or BMP. But anything else, Karen, that you think should be defined, we should stick in there. So we are going to define.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment.
That's all in the.
The rest of the.
For the purposes of this section only because it may come up in other sections.
What is USGA, United States Geological Survey?
Yes.
And you did do that a number of times with a number of other things like TSS and that kind of stuff. So just for some consistency there and to make it a little bit more reader friendly.
Thank you, that's a great comment.
Okay, so. So these are redevelopment activities that are exclusively limited to maintenance and improvement of existing roadways.
Sorry, 3C what? There's a bunch of.
Oh, I'm sorry, 4C.
4C.
4C. Redevelopment activities that are exclusively limited to maintenance and improvement of existing roadways. So this doesn't mean like the maintenance that DPW does, like sweeping or anything like that. This is like construction redevelopment, right?
Yeah, I would think, you know, like repaving.
Yeah, oh, okay, all right. I have no comments. Does anybody else? No, okay, and then D.
The other thing, too, is like putting down new pipes and stuff like that, I'm sure, right? If you have to rip up roads.
If, if you're going to be maintaining, if you're going to be widening less than a single lane, it is exempt, but if you're going to widen it by greater than or equal to a single lane, then you have to meet the requirements for redevelopment. So it's cutting the roadway development a little bit of slack.
I don't have any more comments. Anybody else?
No, I need to read it, go home and read it and.
Yeah, the good, the good news is, everybody, is this will be up before us again as a public hearing, so we'll have time to digest the new version.
And I appreciate the little bit of extra time to do this properly. I, I was very much rushed because I hadn't looked at the modifications, and it was like all of a sudden, I, I told Catherine, I'll do it next week, and then all of a sudden, Brian says, I need it tomorrow.
Well, yeah, if you want, she, she told me she wanted to get on the agenda for this Fall Town meeting. I said, well, we better at least let the board take a look at it at this upcoming planning board meeting.
Right, so.
July 2nd.
Got our comments. Now, will this be submitted by the planning board?
Yes, because it is a zoning bylaw modification by state statute.
So I think, so they have a little bit of work to do and, and, and looking at the most recent version of the, the bylaw, right?
Yeah.
So is it okay with everybody that, that Brian and it's Gab, it's Gabrielle?
Gabrielle.
Gabrielle, work together to finalize the submission to the Board of Selectmen on our behalf?
Do we have to have a public hearing on this?
We will.
We would have a public hearing.
After we submit it to the Board of Select.
Oh, after, I got that.
Yeah. So are you guys fine with Gabrielle and Brian finalizing this warrant article for submission to?
Yeah.
The Select Board?
Yes.
Yes, I have one, just one, one more comment or suggestion. At our meeting with EPA, they said, please send us a draft.
Yep.
We'd like to review it.
Absolutely.
If that's okay with you, I would.
Yeah, but that's not going to hold us up putting it as a placeholder for the warrant.
We'll put it in.
Yeah.
We put it in.
Yeah.
At the same time, you're going to send it to your reviewers.
Yeah.
We send it to town council.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then we still have cha, time to change the final wording before the warrant is typed up.
Okay, so when would you like me to send it for EPA for checking?
Tomorrow.
Yesterday.
Okay.
I'm even tougher than Dennis. Dennis is tough, but I'm tougher.
So there's a, there's a deadline in July, right? There's a deadline in July, is it the second Monday?
It's the 14th.
It's the 14th.
So a week ahead of that.
Brian has to, has to hit go on that email.
Okay.
To the town manager's office.
Okay.
So whatever you have is going that day.
Okay.
So the, right, the more review you can do ahead of time, the better.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
And then it goes to, after we send it to the town manager's office, it then goes to our town council.
Okay.
And then hopefully, we have all our reviews and final edits before they have to send it to the publisher with a warrant to be written, so, published.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
That's great. Like, there's probably not a lot of people that understand our permit like you do. I mean, this is incredible stuff.
Yeah, and I did want to say that, and I should have said that at the beginning. We really appreciate both Ty and Vaughn and DPW bringing this forward to us and letting us know about the deadline. I mean, it's very important that we get it done, and the town obviously cares tremendously about these kinds of issues and storm water management in general, and.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, we appreciate your efforts.
You've been addressing storm water management long before it was fashionable, so, or required.
Yay.
This is just getting some housekeeping, getting it cleaned up.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, it was nice to see you.
Nice to meet you all.
Those that happened before July 14.
Yeah.
I thought it was July 11.
I thought it was the second Monday.
Yeah, I always thought it was July 11.
In July, yeah.
I think I was told the 14th, but if that's misinformation.
Make sure.
Yeah. Well, when is the second Monday in July?
I might get.
It might be the 14th, I don't, I don't think so.
It's July 8.
What, is it July 8?
I believe. I mean, July 7.
Is the 14th the second Monday?
Yeah.
Yep, that is, it's the 14th.
Okay, so that's what, that's what I got.
All right, we're good. Thank you, Gabrielle, bye-bye.
You'll do us like a two week.
Yeah, sometimes it's like really early and then sometimes, you know. All right, so, do you want to do HPP next? Because we have people in the.
Should we do the minutes, though?
Oh, the minutes. Okay. So we have a set of minutes from June 4th, 2025.
And May 21.
Do we have minutes from May 21?
I ask what I have in here, I don't remember.
Those are, those are notes from the workshop, I believe, and those are.
So the meeting, May 21.
So Karen, if you take the packet that you were given in order, the very first thing in the beginning is, is the meeting minutes. So I think.
I've got it, I've got the, I mean, this is from last time.
And the other ones are notes from a workshop that we had.
Yeah. So that's included as part of the HPP review. Yeah, so that's not, we're not voting on those, so that's just included as part of the HPP review to make sure the board's updated.
It should say workshop, because somebody looking at this, they're thinking, what was this?
Good suggestion.
It tricked me, too. It tricked me, too.
Good suggestion, that's a good suggestion.
All right, so I read them, the June, the minutes of our meeting on June 4th. I didn't have any additions. Does anybody have any corrections or additions?
I, I don't have a correction, but I realized I goofed. I think I kept saying C2 and C3, and it's really C1 and C2 for the solar, the ground mounted solar, but I'm not going to obviously correct the minutes for that, I just wanted to let folks know.
Can we just put a note in that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll just change it.
I mean, if I misspeak, they should be, it should be accurately reflected in the minutes, and then in these minutes, you can put in that I misspoke, but.
Otherwise, I mean, the other, other thing we can do is put in asterisks and say that tonight, we noted this should, technically should be C1 and C2. What, would you feel more comfortable with, Brian?
Either one, I'm okay. Whatever, whatever Chrissy wants to do, because she's, she is lordess of the minutes, so.
What do you want to do, Chrissy? You want to change it to C1 and C2? Okay, so I take a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2025 as amended?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. No public hearings, yay. Now can we do the housing production plan?
No, we gotta do it.
Or you want to do, you want to go in order? Okay. Sorry, Mike, okay. Sorry, all right.
Oh, for Mike, yeah, let's do it.
So, yeah, Mike. Someday he's going to be on the Board of Selectmen, and you're going to regret making him wait to talk tonight.
He'll ride home anyway, that's okay.
Oh, okay, all right, you're in for the, for the, okay, duration. Okay, so we have invoice number 2025-2271. Project address is 747 Main Street and 31 of Schumert Road. The amount is $3,925.78. I'd take a motion to accept as presented.
Go be.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next invoice is 2025-2273. Project location is Country Club Estates. The amount due is $1,820.20. Where is Country Club Estates?
Ken Morster's place.
Oh, okay. So was this your trip out there to look at it? Oh, okay.
I've been there.
Okay. All right, so this is paid by the, by the project proponent.
I hope so, that's actually an excellent question. They're doing some sort of new build out there that's before the ZBA, and that, I mean, that's a good question. I don't know why.
Yeah, I don't know why.
I don't know why our board is getting a bill on that yet, because they're, they're doing something like 29 new units, but that's before the ZBA.
All right, let's hold.
Okay.
We'll hold that, I don't want to commit to paying that. So that was invoice 2025-2273. Okay. The next one, 2025-2272 is for Osprey Court. The amount is $2,102.73. I'd take a motion to, to approve payment as presented.
Second.
So Dale is first, Dennis is the second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
And there's this one other one here.
Oh, there's a, there's a late addition?
Yeah.
This is the one that we just did.
Well, then why was it in here? 2220, oh.
We did this one, 18.
Yep, we did three. Well, we did two. We held one.
Yeah.
All right, Willow Circle.
Actually, before that, should I, I'll read Ed's report since he's absent. The project reviews and inspections.
Yes, he emailed us.
Yep.
Thank you.
So this is an email dated Wednesday, 6/18/2025, at 11:02 a.m., from the town engineer, Mr. Edward Pesci. "Hi, Brian. As I mentioned yesterday, I have a conflict with the previously scheduled hearing in another town and cannot attend tonight's meeting. So here are the updates for the project inspections underway. Osprey Court, no change since the last meeting, still awaiting the schedule for binder paving. 474 Main slash 31 Aschumet, building construction continues, and final drainage work on the main detention basin was started last week, and they will complete the rain garden work this week, waiting on the planting schedule. Island Pickle, no change, building foundation work continues. Country Club Estates, well, this is, this may shed light on the bill. Prep work continues, subgrade work for the next phase of development, and we have set up a meeting at the Planning Board office on Tuesday, 26 June, to review the changes proposed and talk over the project entrance safety issues."
So it's a business ZBA, though, right?
Well, the first part, the subgrade work, unless that has to do with the entrance issue that you raised, but why would they have started work on that without consulting us first? I don't...
I don't know.
Yeah, if you could just, just to make sure that we, we pay from the right account.
Oh, 100%.
Yeah.
100%.
Do you know what I mean? Like, we'll pay them, but if it's ZBA account, let's have them pay it.
Yeah, definitely.
17 Silverleaf Lane, final paving was completed, and the project can be completed slash closed out with a final inspection report from me pending. Oakway Highlands, the remaining detention basin that was requested to be ceded was loaned and ceded several weeks ago. Pictures texted to me from Mr. Moran today. I asked him to forward them to you as well. Shows good growth being achieved at this location. I estimate a few more weeks, two or three, plus or minus, and it will be fully established.
Yep, I agree with that.
Thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Yeah, because it's not growing.
Okay.
It is, or it isn't?
No, it's kind of bare. It's down one end, and very little grass is growing on it. There's two of them. The one in the front, the grass is covered up all right. The back one, a couple of weeks ago, when me and Brian went out there, it looked like it was grown. I went out there yesterday, and it's, it's not even growing, and it's dying down there.
Yeah, that storm hit, that storm hit that basin, too. And, and the one that we were worried about, that storm hit the basin that we were most worried about of the two pretty badly. Remember, there's a storm scheduled for that night, and we wanted, it was like a nor'easter, yeah. And we wanted to ensure that there was sediment control put in, which he did do.
I'd like to see him clean them out, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of dirt wet in there, yeah.
From that runoff, you know.
Well, this, this is up on the agenda later, so we can...
All right, anything else from the board engineer?
Nope.
Nope, okay. All business. Slot 1, Willow Circle.
So it does not look like the applicant is here today on that. And I did want to have a conversation with him, but we do have a draft decision there. But after Dennis and I's most recent site visit, we may want to modify it slightly, and we may want the plans modified slightly as well. Yeah. I think the punchline of it is, is in addition to keeping the trees that are there already in that 10-foot buffer, we'd like them to keep the trees that are on the other side of the fence there as well.
Yeah, he's got them all marked.
Basically, there's a whole lot of mature pines there that can just stay, and they, they add privacy to the neighborhood as a, as a whole. And I think in Dennis', and my opinion as well, they, you know, and I don't want to speak for Dennis, but...
No.
They add character to that lot, too. There's still plenty of place to put sod down in the back.
And it kind of goes along with the 40-foot buffer zone that should have been there, the 50, you know, the 100-foot.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, I, I think it, I think it preserves the character of the neighborhood, the privacy in the back for Ms. Souza. And also, just because that first lot is the first lot on that neighborhood, you know, before you turn into the subdivision, it just kind of keeps some of the more, keeping the more mature trees up there just kind of preserve the Cape Cod charm.
Yeah.
So.
So it'd be on 10-foot buffer on each side of the fence?
Well, it would just be, just keep the trees that are up, you know? I mean, because some of them actually even wrap around to the side of the yard. One, one he cut down already, but it looked like it was diseased.
Oh, okay.
He wants to kind of down those ribbons around them.
Okay.
But we're saying, because here's all the trees we're going to keep. You might as well just keep it, you know, continuous.
All right, so...
We're going to...
I see, and they're not here tonight, so...
No, yeah.
You'll have to call Matt, right?
Yeah, Matt was here for him last time, and, I mean, they knew they were on, or he knew they were on the agenda. But I didn't talk to Scott directly. We did try, when we were out on the site visit. We tried to reach Scott or Brian, but weren't through one of the subcontractors that were out there. The HVAC guys were there, and we weren't able to get through to him.
Yeah.
But I don't see why he would have a problem with that. Scott's been like so reasonable. He came to us with this to begin with. Like, he could have done the wrong thing and just dumped the project. It's clear he has pride of craftsmanship, and I don't envision him having a problem with this at all. But I just do want to have that conversation with him.
And then, and, okay.
One thing I want to mention, though, one of the trees they cut down, and then we, I looked at another tree, there's pine beetles are in it. So that, that was at the end of way out here, so they're going to probably have to cut that one down. And we, me and Brian looked at other trees. We didn't see no, you know, infestation on the other trees.
You can put that in the decision?
Yeah.
That, that if there's any, what is it, pine beetle? If there's any trees, while they're out there?
Yeah.
And if there's any trees with pine beetle, just, we give our permission to get rid of it.
They could treat them and try to save them, but it's easy to just cut them down and get them out of there.
We don't think there are, although we saw some frames, the skeletal remains of some dead bugs. But we, well, they may have been cicadas, which would be so weird. I've never seen a skeletal...
It was different?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they may have shrunk from the, they were still decent size, but not as big as cicadas. And they were like translucent, almost, what was left of them. It was a fun day. Cicadas were like flying at us left and right, too. We felt like we were in the Matrix.
The other day, they were like landing all over Mrs. Ross.
They're not down in my house, though.
That's gross.
Oh, because you live near the water.
They're down. No, they, I, this is the third time since I moved here.
Oh.
They come out. They come down twice.
You get them?
Yeah.
I'm surprised.
Twice down in my neighborhood. They come out this time, they didn't.
Wait, so what's the math on that? Three times 17? You've been here almost 60 years, then, huh?
An old guy.
Well, the first year, the first year, the first year I came here, they would come out.
Okay. Oh, so two cycles, two cycles, yeah.
Then I went 14.
That's why we always look to Dennis for information.
So that's about 30 years. Well, you've been on the Planning Board for about, for over 30 years.
That's so funny, like, well, look at all plans, and we'll be like, Dennis, it's your signature.
Well, that, the A&R that we're looking at for Shellback, Dennis signed, signed on that.
All right, so this will come back to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I like that idea that there looks to be a natural treed area that you're going to ask them to keep.
Yeah, and those are really beautiful houses. He's doing a great job over there.
On the front, where they have their fence, it looks like they're missing some trees that they can plant. Remember, out front, there was that one?
Oh, yeah, that, we may suggest that, too. Pop in a couple of new trees where that one diseased tree was cut down just to create a little extra privacy. I'm sure he would go for that. And then, there was one other thing, though. Oh. Regarding the trees in the back behind the fence, his arborists got to us with the memorandum that should be in your packet.
Yeah.
Recommending that we just trim the dead branches on those trees because they're otherwise healthy trees.
They look healthy.
Yeah, they did look healthy. And knowing those kinds of trees, I mean, those are arborite, right? Yeah.
I think some of them were, but there was...
The ones in the back that had, that had some dead branches, sometimes they just get that because...
Arborite need sun.
What's that?
They need a lot of sun.
Oh, well, those ones have sun. They're not under the canopy. They're further up behind the other lots. But sometimes what happens is the branches on the inside, just like you're saying, Karen, don't get sun.
They do.
Because of their own branches.
You just cut them out.
Exactly.
They're very hardy.
Yes, yeah, so I think that's what he's recommending there.
Okay. Housing production plan. So there were, there were, the most recent that we're considering tonight is on the website.
Right.
Okay? And there was a clean version with all the appendices, and then there was a redline version. I read the redline version. I only have one question for Brian. And then, I looked at the appendices, and I think they're clearer than, based on, we have with us... Why don't you come up, Mike? The chair of the Affordable Housing Committee is here. He made some comments during one of our working groups on the appendices. Hi, Mike. Mike Sparks.
Hi, Michael.
And I think that the appendices are much clearer now. The comments received in 2024 are in there, clearly marked. The comments from the 2025 version is clearly marked. There's a, there's a small, when you look in the HPP, it explains that the 2024 version, you know, was presented, and there was a need to revise it, and it goes through that. And I, so it's all in there if you read it. Mike, do you have any?
No, and, and the appendix B, I think it has separate comments, separate section of comments that were made to the 2024 version and replies. And then, all the comments that came from your board, our committee, and the public, separate for the 2025.
Yeah.
So that was nicely delineated. I think they did a good job.
And I read through all the responses to the 2025 comments, and I accept them. I think they were, yeah, they either say, you know, they'll, they say things like, "Well, yep, that's in there." Or, you know, just because something is on the list of town-owned land, it doesn't mean that things have been specified. Like, the final decision on what exactly goes there hasn't been made. So I hope that gives some people, you know, in a close-by neighborhood to some of this town-owned land, you know, some comfort, that those are, those are things that have not been settled and not going to, they're not supposed to be settled in the HPP. This, yeah, this is a higher-level plan. Those specificities will be determined by other entities, ultimately, the Affordable Housing Trust, but, because they own the land, but... So that, that was well done. I do have a question for you. So on accessory dwelling units, right? I, so, okay, so for parking, for both single-family and multifamily homes, two parking spaces are required per residential unit. For accessory dwelling units, right? They require a parking spot if they're over a half a mile away from a transit station, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this says accessory dwellings require an additional parking space if within...
Can you give us a page citation?
Half a mile of the transit stop, 59 and 60. It's in there twice.
Yep, no, that is a typo. We will make sure...
Only required for properties with it. All right, so I'm gonna circle these. Well, I print, I didn't, we didn't print them out. I printed out only the two, the pages that I had commented for. Will you pass it over to Brian for him to? Okay, so there's a small little edit. It's, okay. And that was it. I mean, otherwise, I'd, I'd accept a motion to accept the 2025 version.
June 2025.
June 2025 version.
I just wanted to say that the, that it says full approval of the Affordable Housing Committee. I, I think with the changes that have gone emphasizing the water issues and affordable housing, and particularly over the last two months, I think the, with the use of the consultant, the, the inclusion of all the comments and edits and responses is fantastic. I think it's a great document.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that.
So I'd accept a motion to approve the Town of Mashpee Housing Production Plan dated June 2025 with those two slight amendments regarding the parking spaces related to the ADU.
So be.
Oh, and further, to recommend that the Board of Selectmen likewise approve the HPP and submit it to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for review and approval.
A second so be.
Second.
Can I ask for one other thing to be added to that motion?
Sussed you out.
Because we want a third so be. We like it when Dennis says so be. Can you also empower me to make any minor adjustments that are necessary, like things like scribners' changes, or if we get very small comments back from the state, and then we can just change them and get this, get it adopted by the state, too?
I'm all fine with that.
So be.
So make a motion.
So be.
So be.
Second. Chrissy, you got all that? Any other further discussion? I'll take a roll, I'm going to take a roll call vote on this. It's so important. Rob?
Aye, approve.
Dale?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yes.
Karen?
Aye.
Chair is yes. Congratulations. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Oakway, we already did that, right?
Yeah, unless you wanted to talk about it further, I mean...
What is the exact date of the HPP? Is June 2025?
It's just June of the month, yeah.
Did you pass that down to Brian? That's our certificate of vote. Yay! Okay. All right, new business. Proposed warrant article. Several.
So then, we are tabling. If I could just address one issue on Oakway Highlands. They, the applicant asked for a date...
Oh, I'm sorry. We're not done with old business. Oakway Highlands.
It sounds, based on the informal preliminary discussion we had, we're going to go ahead and grant, the applicant requested to continue this until July 16th.
July 16th, yep, and then we'll see what happens with the grass. Okay, sorry about that. New business. Proposed warrant article. Okay, there's several. Okay, we're going to take a quick break while we read all of these. Does everybody have the special permit? Okay. So on top of the page that says, all right, there's a, there's proposed split-zone access amendment. Okay, it's on two pages in here. One of them should be special, delete section 17424 CG, special permit modification. Do you see that, Karen?
I see 6D, which is proposed warrant for acceptance of bike path.
I have, I have...
What, what are we doing? 6A, to delete special permit modification?
Yep, but at the top of the page, it had a leftover, it had proposed split-zoned access amendment.
Yeah, and this is not in my packet.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, here it is. Okay, two, two of them are, actually.
Okay. So we should have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Do we, five of them, five?
So the last one in your packet is mis-titled. That, the last one in your packet is the special permit one. It's mis-titled. You see proposed split-zone amendment twice. The second one is, in fact...
Yeah.
Item 1, which is the special permit modifications regarding annexing land.
All right.
It's twice. It's, it's...
Yep.
Two different.
So this one...
Which one are we looking at?
So if you want to do them in order of the agenda, logically, turn to the last one in that section of your packet if you want to do the first one.
Yep, it's this one, Karen.
And obviously, that was facetious.
All right, so this one... Okay, the intent is the amendment would require cluster subdivisions or multifamily developments to comply with current zoning bylaws at the time an applicant seeks a land expansion modification instead of the bylaws in place at the time of the original special permit. So what happened with Willow Bend, right?
Yeah. Yep.
They, they modified their special permit to take in more land, right? But they got to use the zoning from 30 years ago.
All right.
So this would.
Stop it. Eliminate that.
Yeah.
Good.
It would, it would tidy that up.
Yep.
I think for the special, the, the, the public hearing, we should have the redline version available too?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Because it's easier to see, this one is easier to see when it's redlined.
Well, the funny thing is, is you're really just deleting one small phrase in that entire paragraph.
Yeah.
Because the first half of the paragraph deals with other situations where it already is required, the current zoning bylaws already is required. And this is just the one exception.
You're starting a new, you're starting a new.
Yeah.
Sentence and, okay. So I, I think we should submit this to the Board of Selectmen.
So be.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, now we're going back to one?
Now we're going back to.
Oh.
So we, we just did proposed warrant article to delete section 17424 CG, special permit modification. So we just, we did that one. Next one is proposed warrant article for lots and multiple zone districts.
So that's gonna be the proposed split zone access.
Okay.
Amendment, so that's the second to last one in your paragraph, uh, in your packet.
And there's a minor typo on the explanation.
Okay.
Split zoning instead of split.
Okay, in the first line.
Spit zoning, actually.
Spit.
Zone lot. We don't want any of those.
Okay, so this amendment would require industrial commercial uses on split zone lots where the other zoning is residential to limit access to the industrial commercial zone side of the lot, thereby prohibiting industrial or commercial entrance and exit on the residential side of the lot.
All right, that's good.
Very clever language, Mr. Brian.
Thank you, Round Chair.
I think it's gonna work. So I take a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion to.
Do second.
To submit to the Board of Selectmen.
To the Board of Selectmen, the proposed split zone access amendment, which limits access to the industrial, the amendment requires, limits access to the industrial commercial zone side of the lot, prohibiting industrial or commercial entrance and exit on the residential side of the lot.
Dale, you second that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Can I share a fun fact on that before we move on to the next one? So I, either way, I'm still deferring to Town Council's office and their review that they do, but I did look into it and there is an old case from 1966. It's called the, that's now called the Harrison Rule that dates back to this case because it was Harrison versus Building Commissioner of such and such a city. That was also then reaffirmed again 30 years later in two cases in, in 1996 that allows for this kind of zoning. So unless there's been an adjustment since then, um, we should be good, but of course I defer to Town Council's office.
All right. Proposed warrant articles for solar energy systems amendment. There's option one and option two, and I'm gonna hand this over to Brian.
So as we discussed, we have, um, an application before us where at least fortunately they need to modify their ZBA special permit, this is the 868 File with the Road application, but it brought to our attention a nuanced adjustment that we need to make. And there's one of two, and actually I even thought of a third option this morning that we could do to approach it. But the issue is, this is that the planning board is the only one who can grant dimensional waivers for these types of solar projects in industrial one. It's subject to plan review committee, uh, or plan, yeah, plan review committee review only. And so there's no actual way to get them in front of the planning board to get waivers. So there's two and now in fact even three approaches that you can have to adjust that. One is you can make it a special permit instead of just plan review committee, and I believe that's option one here. Two is you can prohibit waivers in industrial one. And then three that I thought of, which I think maybe at least, uh, is something worth exploring, we could do a third option that's a combination of the two and say they would only do a special permit in front of the planning board if they were seeking waivers, but otherwise it would be plan review committee review.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, isn't it? I wish I had thought of it earlier.
I like that one.
I thought of it this morning.
So I'd take, I'd make a motion to authorize the town planner to write that up and submit it on our behalf.
Sec, I, so be.
There a second?
Second, yes.
Any discussion?
Option three.
Option three is a combination. If there's no waivers, it's plan review. But if there's a waivers, it's a special permit in front of the planning board. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, acceptance of bike path layout.
So here's a quick backstory on that for this lot. And the reason this came up is this lot in Shellback Way, I went ahead and pulled that bike path easement that's held by the town. And the easement is recorded and it's in effect, but the easement itself, which again dates to the 90s, so we have plenty of time, said that a town meeting vote has to adopt the easement within 99 years, otherwise we lose it.
Thank goodness somebody read that.
So we're somewhere 30 years into that and I checked with the clerk's office and it doesn't look like we voted on it yet. So we might as well do it now, you know, rather than wait 60 some odd years until it's the 11th hour.
Oh, wow, yeah.
I wonder if I'll still be around.
I bet you will. Dennis will be the only one left. There will be a nuclear attack and Dennis will still be here on the planning board.
Yeah, we'll bring you that. Artificial intelligence. Okay. So is this a zoning bylaw or is this a?
So that is, I'm glad you raised that question. It's not a zoning bylaw and I do wanna have and have not yet had a conversation with the town manager's office about, is this just something that the select board should do? But in case it's not with that deadline pending.
Okay.
If for whatever reason, because that easement is shown on land court plans, if for whatever reason there's planning board authority is required to do it, and I'm also wanna get a town council, town council's opinion, but I wanna do that in July. So it's just like, we can pull it if we need to, as long as the select board advances it, but we just need to figure out, like, I just didn't wanna take the risk of losing the opportunity, so.
So I'd accept a motion in a second to submit this to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the warrant.
So be.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And then we, we already did the stormwater management amendment.
Yeah, we had to do this one, right?
And, no, we did that one. That's the bike path. And we left that, Chrissy, correct me if I'm wrong, that Brian and Gabrielle were going to work for the final language to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen on our behalf, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Did we take a vote on that?
No.
Uh, I'd take a motion.
So be.
Second. Karen, did you second it?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
What, now what did you bring this for? Is this something you like?
This is for the next, this is, yes. So the next item is application for chapter 40B project eligibility letter by On Commons LLC, the 65 rental units on approximately 1.86 acres of land located at lot 14, Job's Fishing Road in Mashpee. This is zero Job's Fishing Road, accessories map 74, parcel 20A3, and it's at the corner of Route 28 and Job's Fishing Road. It's that lot. So there was a site visit. I'm sorry that I could not get there, but maybe, um, who went and who wants to give a summary of the visit?
I read, and I don't like that it's gonna be 68, I think they said 68 feet high.
58.
58.
Oh, 58? All right, that's still too high for me. And I don't know, the planning board has no say on this.
So. Right. So we're a local board.
But the state was there, said, this is what we're looking for, this type of housing. So once he sent that to me, I said, this is a done deal.
So, so we're a local board. We have to, at this point, we're gonna give our comments to the select board. Once it's, if it makes it to the ZBA, we would give comments and we, you know, we have some resources. At that time, and we send them to the ZBA and then the ZBA processes it. I just wanna let you know that the project, the comments on the application for a project eligibility letter are extremely important. I was involved in one. We gave every single comment we had and the developer redesigned the project unbelievably so. They, they had a building right up to the edge of the sidewalk. It was gonna be three stories. Based on the, the numerous comments from staff and board members, they decided to bring the building to the rear of the property. So it, so, so I know what you're saying. Everybody says, oh, you can't beat a chapter 40B, but you can modify it.
Another, another question I had.
You'd have to put the parking in front.
Well, this lot is very different that I'm talking about, and it is on Route 28, but it's in Yarmouth. And it has an existing commercial building. It's a laundromat, right, in the dead center of the lot. And they were gonna put the housing in front. And now based on the comments from the town, they're gonna put it in the back. And they reduced the number of units from, I don't know, 50 to 24.
Another question I had, I thought we had a buffer zone, like a 40-foot buffer zone.
50.
Whatever, whatever it is, but they said, they, they said, we don't have to do it because of 40B.
Yeah, so it's a waiver that they're gonna seek. That's, that is the reality of how 40B operates, is that developers, and again, this is a developer initiated project, they can seek waivers to the local code. The 50-foot buffer that we have is a part of our local code. So the developer will seek a waiver to that and there's a good chance the state, well, let me phrase it this way, the state backs up developers on most waivers. I can't say that this is necessarily a waiver that the state would back them up if there is a way to reconfigure the building and the parking lot and especially to, I mean, 50 feet, you know, I don't, I don't know, 50 feet takes up probably a good section of that lot, so they'll need some sort of waiver to it in order to build there.
Even 10 feet.
But the present plans don't have any buffer.
Yeah, and they have.
Yeah, the present plans don't have any buffer.
Yeah.
They have the, they have the bike path or slash sidewalk that's there, but they don't have any tree buffer. They have some landscaping shown. Like, but it's singular trees, it's not like.
So it's zero vegetated buffer?
Effectively, yeah. I mean, there's. Trees there. And there may be, there may be a safety, so first off, I do wanna caveat all these comments with Mashpee needs affordable housing and we want affordable housing. And this will present 17 restricted units in perpetuity at the 65 units, right? Because it's 25% of the overall units.
Well, you say.
So I don't, I don't want to jump right into all the things that we'd like to see changed. I just wanna, I do wanna state that for the record, that it's, it's a good idea to have affordable housing. We say we want affordable housing and here's an opportunity to work with the developer to get some affordable housing and at the same time hopefully shape the project so it may be a little bit more Mashpee and Cape Cod friendly. Because I do think that having, I mean, what I'm hearing from Dennis is having that 58-foot high building right on the corner there may not exactly fit in there.
Okay, so Brian, what you would like is for all of us, each of us to comment and send you comments. You put it together in a letter and send it to the select board?
Well, I'm gonna defer to the Chair as to how the board will com, this board will comment, but I have been.
If you want the planning board to make a comment, then we have to come to a consensus on that, right? If you want planning board members to submit their comments, then it will go in. My suggestion is to try to get consensus.
Yes.
It's more powerful if we say, this is what the planning board.
Altogether.
Has our comments as a board, as a local board. So that's what I'd rather do.
Now, you, you can't get a waiver on public safety, say the fire department, can you?
Legitimate public safety concerns are one thing that the HAC, and by HAC, I mean the Housing Appeals Committee, where this would get appealed to first by a developer, which is a state agency. I don't mean the local HAC here that does affordable housing. They will enforce, uh, or they will back up towns when they have legitimate public safety concerns. And so, yes, I think looking into.
Health and public safety.
Health and public safety, yes.
Okay, so we're still on the site visit report. So let's.
What happened?
So, yeah, so, okay, so we got, we got three comments from you. You were at the site visit. Do you wanna give us a report about the site visit, please?
Yes. Somebody had a question of transferable of affordable units in or out of this 40B. And Mr. Bondi said, no, there's not gonna be any transference. There is no second egress, but I think.
On the?
On the entrance.
The parking lot.
Yeah, going into the, going into the development.
For, for the lot, not the building.
On the lot. But they, I think they said they could add one. There's, there, there is an issue, well, I guess I can't talk about issues.
Well, tell us about the site, site visit.
What I?
Yeah. What you picked up at the site visit?
There may be a problem about the fire, fire truck, but it was mentioned that they could possibly get an easement on Mashpee common property. I don't know if you were there at that point.
I did not hear that discussion, yeah.
In other words, an easement that they could, I guess, pay for so that they could get in and they wouldn't have to back out, which is the way it is right now.
So why don't, why don't you guys share that plan? That shows the parking lot.
Somebody asked about the open space.
The 27% usable open space.
And that was explained as the greenery in the front and the side of. Job's Fishing. And you can see that when you drive up.
Yeah.
The play area for children, there is none.
And then this is all gonna be housing.
This is, uh. No, this is, uh.
Mr. Bondi answered that Mashpee Commons has substantial capacity. In the plant to do this job.
The waste, so wastewater, okay.
Waste water. Somebody asked if they were going to cut down all the trees and there was no answer given.
Well, they probably will.
Well, I'm sure they, it's only 1.83 acres, so, what is it? Eight-six. Somebody, I think it was Lynn, had a concern about having only one elevator. If you have, you know, a handicapped person, say that breaks down, how does that person get up to the third floor? So they might consider something, two elevators maybe.
Away.
Deed restricted for perpetuity. And I, the one thing I didn't, the property is 200 feet deep, it was stated. Just, just to know that. We met up at the clear space up on the hill and then some people went down to the bottom to, to look at the front. I looked at it many times, so I didn't need to go. Oh, there is gonna be a sidewalk going up Job Fishing, Job's Fishing. And there is a sidewalk, as you know, in the front on 28. And I think somebody asked the last time we were here about whether, what the hell is wrong with me? Somebody asked about who would be living on the first floor. Those are, those, if you look at the plans, you see those are apartments. There are pretty big windows there and I don't know what kind of screening would be there for the front. That's about it. There were a lot of people there. Do you want me to tell you who was there? Mr. Bondi, the engineer, the fire chief, the deputy chief, the building commissioner, Michaela Colombo, Lynn was there, Ann Malone, Paul Colombo, Tracy, Paula, Mike was there, our Chair of the Affordable Housing, Dennis, town planner, and I. But we had, you know, people who are.
Who were there.
I was there as well.
Oh, David came later. Oh, David came later. David, Paula, and Tracy.
You were there?
Yeah.
And Dale, do you want to add anything about the site visit?
Arden was there as well.
Who?
Arden Cadrin.
Oh, yes, she was.
Well, what I'll add is that just re, kind of reinforcing the, some of the main concern, the major concern, I think, was the lack of setback along 28, Job's, and I'm sorry, Job's Fishing Road and 28. And just in the plans, a lack of like a shared open space for the residents.
Yeah, for kids to play.
Right, for kids to play. And some, somebody brought up, maybe if they, you know, worked with the, the commons to create more sidewalk going from the lot, going past Lot 20, and then across the street from, I forgot what street that is.
Donovan's Lane?
Yeah, going to the open space that's, that open space that's already there by the library and the knockabout mini brewery in the library and the fire department, just for access for these residents and potential future residents for, to access safe, open space for all the different reasons you would go to open space.
My, one of my, my comments, when I did look at the plans online, but, and I, I was off Cape, so I didn't go to the meeting, a site visit, is that directly across the street is the shed place, and I assume they're commercial or C2, 3, I'm not sure, but they absolutely have no frontage, you know, no buffer, whatever. They're built right through the road. And that could impact direct, residents directly across the street without a buffer. You're looking at, you know, sheds all day.
There used to be a restaurant at Pickwicks years ago, and it, it was all parking space there for the restaurant, that's why it has no buffer zone.
Right. So, I mean, it lends more credence to have more of a buffer where you're going to have a residential.
But the land is so small, the site is so small, the only way you could create more land is to take away some of the units.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, or parking.
So, I think the, yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
One of the, I'm concerned about the entrance to get in there, because it's so close to 28, when you're coming in to go to, say, go to church. It's right across from the bank that's going to come out of there. If people come across, you know, from Roach Brothers to go up to the church or go to 151, there's a lot of traffic there, and you're going to add another 100 more cars coming out of that, that space there.
Yeah, and there, there's not a lot of space between there and the traffic light. That's one of the things that I was very surprised about, like, this is one of the things in real estate where it's always great to do a site visit, because looking at things at GIS or online are just never the same.
No.
The, that initial bound where the property line starts before, like, you know, on the side that's opposite of 28, so like, if you're heading towards 28.
Yeah.
That is surprisingly close to 28.
Yeah.
When you're there on the site. It's surprisingly close.
It's in the sidewalk, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The bound was on the sidewalk.
Well, yeah, the one that was on 28 was in the middle of the sidewalk, but I'm talking about the bound before the bank. Remember?
Okay, yeah.
Because we were, we were actually standing, talking about the project on the lot that's adjacent to it, where the East Commons campus is going to be.
Yeah.
For the already approved Mashpee Commons 40B. And when we started to make our way down, and they showed me that bound for the corner of the lot there, and I saw how much space was left until 28, I was like.
You know what you're talking about.
That is a surprisingly skinny lot. It's a lot skinnier than I thought, just from looking at it on GIS.
I'm just concerned with that, Chris.
And so, and so what that means, why I thought of that with Dennis's comments, is that entrance that they show on the sketch plans, which is almost directly across from the bank's entrance, is real close to that traffic light.
Now, under our normal zoning, I know this is commercial, it's not zoned residential, but if it, if it were zoned residential for, I don't know, R2?
R3.
R3? Is that 80,000 square foot?
R5 is 80,000.
Okay. So, how many homes could fit on this?
One.
1.8, yeah, one with a lot left over. One in a, one big home with a big ADU.
And a, 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 a.
So, one unit and one ADU?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I think we need to say that in, I think we need to say that in our comments, that under our, you know, if this was a regular lot in R, you said?
R3.
R3.
R5.
R3. It would be allowed.
Okay, it's closer to R5.
So, if it was under our residential zoning, right? We could have one unit with one ADU. So, basically, two units, and they're asking for?
65.
65.
65, right.
So, I think.
58 feet high, 65 units.
So, I think that, that's something that we should put right away in our comments.
I agree.
Is the, is the stark contrast between the two. Now, do, have you ever looked, and I haven't worked here that long, but have, have we done any type of density analysis in anywhere in town to kind of compare this to something else in town? Like, what's, what's the highest density we've approved so far?
Yeah, no, I have not looked at that yet, although just kind of spitballing, I looked at, I did look at a couple of things, and, you know, absent the, there's approved and then there's built, because obviously, right next door on the commons is, you know, there's going in approximately 120 units that's already approved, they're just not built yet.
Right, so, we could, we could look at what that, the entire 2027, I mean, 2007, chapter 40B, what that whole density is. We could look at that.
But that's all for the area in the commons, is the other thing. So, if you compare it to other areas of town, obviously, there's going to be a stark contrast, because there's much less density in other areas of Mashpee. The other thing that I looked at.
Shellback Way though has a lot of density.
Fair point.
So, so where I live, O'Carlo, which is fairly, that's 10 units per acre.
So, this density.
I don't, I don't think Shellback is much different. I don't think Shellback is much more than.
Right, so this density works out to about 30 units, or over 30 units per acre, and which would be 3X.
This is, this is almost 35.
Yeah.
It's, it's 34.95 units per acre, it's 35 units per acre.
Which is comparable, this is the kind of spitballing I did, it is comparable to the less dense areas of Manhattan.
You're talking about Manhattan?
Yeah, which ranges in density from 30 units per acre to, I think, like, in some areas, 100 units per acre. They've got that new skinny tower that they built a few years ago, Dead Central in Central Park. I mean, so, every unit in that has a view of all of Central Park looking northward, right in the center. It's kind of a cool idea, but anyway, a lot of density.
Lot 13 right here.
So, I, I think we, we should, we should, I think our big ask for the state would be to limit the number of units.
Right.
For this project eligibility letter. I don't know if they've ever done that, but I think that should be our ask. Seeing that, in our underlying zoning, we, we would allow two units there. I don't know if you can get any more data, but there's places in town that are like 10 units per acre, and 35 units per acre is look, is, you're comparable to den, less dense parts of Manhattan. And I think we should put that out there, because I think that's something that mass housing staff needs to think about that.
What is the legal frontage? They're looking for 39.
I'm talking about density now.
I know you are, but I'm just, but what that has to do with also is these, this building right on the road.
Right, so this density argument is really important, because it causes all these other problems.
Yeah.
It causes the lack of a, of a, of a decent setback. It causes a parking lot where the ladder truck is not going to be able to get in and out of. It causes the, you know, the height. It causes the height. It causes all these things that, in our community, we don't want. You know, we want safe and decent affordable housing.
Years ago, I asked, is there a time when the Cape can't take no more development? It reached this point, you know, 20,000 people on Mashpee, after that, it can't, you know, the water can't take it. Have we ever did any numbers like that to see how much Mashpee actually can develop and the people that can live here? Not just the housing, but people. And you have so many people, it causes problems.
That's very much worth looking into.
So, is that good if we start just talking about density right away? And that, that this high density leads to a number of concerns and problems on the site, right? So, you have, you have a lack of the setback.
Instead of saying leads to, not to wordsmith too much, can we say is into related with?
No, it causes.
Yeah, I think this public safety issues potentially stand even by themselves.
Okay, but we don't have to put that, we don't have to put that, yep, so.
Put that by itself, right.
So, the lot, it's, the lot presents. What did you say, issues, safety, presents safety issues in itself?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I want to hear back from FD on their particular comments, but, you know, my understanding is there may be some concerns there.
So, that's because of the distance between the intersection and the entranceway?
It's regarding equipment, you know, building height and the equipment, whether or not we have sufficient trucks with sufficient ladders to cover it, it's turnaround of the fire trucks, like, right now, with the building being right on Route 28, if there, if there's a fire on that side of the building, I mean, are they going to park the truck right on 28 and hem up traffic while they're fighting a fire? Like, what is that going to look like? But I'm not an expert there, and so I just want to defer to the fire department. But it's, I think, at a minimum, worth having planning raise.
Yeah.
And we can potentially tweak whatever we formally send to the select board when we have a written memo, like, the department can tweak that, when we have a written memorandum random from FD, if you're open to that. If not, then we can just raise these issues ourselves, and.
Well, shouldn't the party proponent be getting a statement from the fire department?
They will.
We should be incorporating.
They will, but that's one of the things with planning is.
We don't have it yet, so.
No, yeah, nor, nor do we. We'll, we'll be getting, the planning, everything's going to, so, at the request of the town manager, everything's going to go through the planning department, then to the town manager's office, then to the select board, then to the state. Does that make sense?
Wait, we're, we're going to have comments, a group comment.
So, this is, this is, what Mary's working on right now is the planning board.
Letter.
Memorandum.
Yeah, memo.
All other departments are still sending their comments, you know, departments, boards, and committees are still sending their comments to the planning department for consolidation.
Yeah, I got, I heard that today, yeah.
One of your comments, Karen, or from the site, struck me, and I looked at the plans, about the single elevator availability.
Only one.
I think that it warrants a, a comment from the board here as well.
Definitely.
It's, you know, it might have been picked up by somebody else, but.
Lynn brought that up.
It was picked up by Lynn.
Yeah.
An elevator, one elevator.
I, I think that's important for the board here. I know it's inside the building, and we generally don't comment on what's inside, but that's worthy of a.
Thank you, Lynn.
And I'm sure this is fire suppression sprinklers.
Yeah, it will be, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, goes without saying.
You've got to remember that fire truck with the lift, they have the arms that go out at like 22 feet. So, if they're on the street, they got to put those arms out for the thing don't tip over, the, the boom.
Yeah, so that would take up that entire side of Route 28 if they're parked there.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay, so.
Probably better like to flip it and put the building on that side.
That's what they should do, flip the building.
Or less, and in, and in the middle.
But then they won't.
You can't, you can't create space there. The only way you can create space is take away units.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, you know, because like, this is not really a couple years ago, not really a good spot for this, I mean, but trying to make it work within the confines of it. Because you don't want, you definitely don't want this building.
Yeah, okay.
Right on 28.
I don't think so.
Change the character of Mashpee.
That reason, the, the fire reason.
Don't you almost need bollards there in front? Because people, people crash into store windows, we've seen it. It's so close. I mean, you can go right through the.
And I think it's even worth commenting, those are all the, these safety reasons for that are great, but I also think it's worth just commenting on the character of Cape Cod and aesthetics. Because, I mean, let's be candid, there's a bunch of these tall buildings right on the street in Falmouth, and the people in Falmouth are not happy with them. I mean, Main Street, for the most part, is kind of like a quaint, walkable street, and then you get down to the end of it, as you're heading towards East Falmouth, and there's now three or four buildings there that are, you know, you feel like, you know, as I mentioned earlier, like you're walking in Manhattan.
Yeah.
And, and I've heard a number of comments from a number of residents in Falmouth that they're not happy about it. And that's true in other areas of the Cape as well. So, there is that aesthetic component. We still want to focus on things like public safety, et cetera, but I don't think it hurts to mention that.
So, in the packet, in the packet, it has Mashpee Commons residential design guidelines, okay? Now, I can't see anywhere in the design guidelines where a building like this would be, the building that they're proposing, would be acceptable.
Yeah.
So, I think that's how we can work on the aesthetic piece, is that, you know, aesthetically, the.
Well, you have more architectural design, like, in that picture there, you're probably going to have less units. Porches.
Right.
If you're looking at this.
Well, that, I was hoping, so, this is, this is Cap'n's Row in Hyannis.
Right, yeah.
Right, that's, Bornstein did that.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, that would, that would fit into the residential design guidelines of Mashpee Commons.
That basically, yeah.
That would. And that's three stories, but you can see, that, that looks a lot different than what there.
Yeah, definitely.
Three stories.
And it's in their packet, if you noticed, it's in their housing market there. The end, before they can build something like this, they have to prove that people will rent it, right? So, they do a housing market study. And in the back, they have this picture in there. So, I snagged it, and I said, "Gee, I would like something like that way more." I mean, I know it's three stories and it's pretty dense, but would you guys?
Oh, yeah.
Like that as a suggestion in our comments that?
Follow that.
Mike, I'm going to recognize you, just come right up.
Okay. I was just, in keeping with what you're talking about with the, the building height?
Microphone, microphone, microphone.
Microphone. Sit, sit right down.
Okay.
In, in keeping with the, I saw that the four, four-story building would be, on the mashpee.com, mashpeecommons.com website, all of their renderings they have of all the future developments, they have nothing higher than three stories. So, this isn't even in keeping with the grand design of decades in the future.
But that's why they sold the lot, so it's privately owned now. And Rod Bonvey said, "We still got to go with Mashpee Commons with some designs and stuff, but it's our lot now." So, they're going to have some leeway in that, this thing with Mary's talking about. That's, maybe, I told you, Mashpee Commons was going to start selling their lots out individually, so they didn't have to be so restricted.
Right.
You know, that's what they're doing. They did it with, you know, the, 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 the arson home, they sold that lot to them, La Betteen, whatever it's called, and now they sold this to Rod Bonvey.
I'm thinking that they may not be building anything more, because why would they give away capacity?
Yeah.
Like this, for 65 units, when they would need it for themselves if they were really going to build?
Well, they have a, they have a lot of land, though. They have a lot of land, like, north and over by 151.
It might be on the Picknick Park.
On the other side of, yeah, on the other side of the road.
130 acres, something like that.
Can I, can I ask an unrelated question? With the zero net neutral law, where they sold this, and they're going to put 122 bedrooms
That bed to do every everything in their master plan.
Oh, yeah.
So, so, you know, yeah, their wastewater treatment facility can be added on to. They don't have enough space to discharge. So when they say, oh, our wastewater treatment facility can handle this, they're not lying, but they're not telling the whole story. So I think we should say something about that.
Yeah.
In the plan that we're concerned that the other pieces of Mashpee Commons Mashpee Plan, Master Plan, won't be able to be executed because of limitations to their discharge area.
If I could just add to that. Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. The, um, I have learned from the housing authority meetings that when Homeyer, which is our existing low-income affordable housing, when they asked to be hooked up to the Mashpee Commons wastewater system, they were told no.
But, but Lynn, they were told no because they weren't offering the town, they weren't offering Mashpee Commons anything.
But, but, but the issue is if the Mashpee Commons has the capacity, they could have perhaps either negotiated or tried to come to some sort of, I mean, Asher's Path is paying for their wastewater, um, hooking up to the wastewater. But the question is, is do they really have the capacity if they're not going to hook up the 24 units that are in Homeyer? And just one other thing that, that was, I found in the packet that I found weird. On page 24, there's a section eight called Sustainable Development Criteria. And it's a long, big, it's a long paragraph and it, it, to me, some of it in here is like sort of the myth of, you know, this kind of housing. It says, oh, it's right on a transportation, it's right on public transportation. The problem is, we don't have public transportation. Occasionally, yes, there's occasionally a bus that goes to Hyannis and occasionally there's a bus that goes to Woods Hole. But that's not really what, how people, most people get around. Yes, they could walk to, if they worked in Mashpee Commons. But the other thing that's very strange to me is that 12 lines down, it talks about increased bicycle and pedestrian access via the expansion of sidewalks along Neck Road and Center Bridge Road.
That was a cut and paste from another, another project.
Well, that's shoddy workmanship, if that's what it is. Um, so, and it's close to a transportation corridor. So did they just do a cut and paste? Is how much of this, this project has really been thought all the way through is sort of my question, looking at this clearly. Where, where did you get these street names from? I do think that, and I, the other question that I raised at, at the, um, the site visit was the accessibility. It's really, it seems to me that having two affordable accessible units is not enough. They have four accessible units, two market rate and two affordable. And, uh, that's not, I think, what the town needs. And I know that, that people were talking about, was there a study? I did mention at the site visit about a traffic study and they said, yes, that that would happen, so. Because coming on to Job's Fishing, that close to the light, coming out of the parking lot, cars are turning, there are. And, and.
The proposed entranceway is.
And, and the, the inclination will be to come out of the parking lot and make a left. And that is dangerous.
Good luck with that.
Dangerous.
When you go to the site, that's to the point that I was saying earlier about how close that bound is to 28. It's one thing to look at it on GIS, it's a whole other thing to be right there.
It doesn't look like that on GIS. I looked at it.
Like, I, I have a bum shoulder right now, but I can still throw a baseball pretty easily and get it to into the middle of that intersection.
All right, so, uh, like, the lot itself, the lot presents safety issues in itself, regardless of the density of the height, right? The distance of the entranceway, uh, the proposed entranceway to the Route 28 intersection is insufficient and a left turn, um, from the site will be, uh, very difficult.
You'd almost have to put in a barrier on Job's Fishing to stop people from coming out and turning left because if you're going to Hyannis or to Falmouth and you're coming out of there, you're going to come out of the parking lot and make a left.
I also noticed, I didn't go to the site visit, but I did walk the site. The proximity to the established electrical and utility lines is pretty close. Those utilities.
Coming off of Job's Fishing Road.
No, 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 there's electrical lines, there's telephone poles on Route 28. So when you're on that bike path, those electrical lines are right there. So I don't know if those are going to be moved or put under, but if you had a four-story building right there, you, those upper windows would be, would be right there at those electrical lines. So I think they would be.
You should put that down.
I think they're going to be, they might be 20 feet away, but if people can open up their windows, they will be able to throw things very easily on those electrical lines.
Just, just as, as a reminder of the evidence, Mashpee Commons put in the three-way stop at the top of the hill because they knew you couldn't come out of Mashpee Commons safely and make a left-hand turn on Job's Fishing without having three-way stopped.
Absolutely.
You know what cracked me up, affordability?
It's not affordable.
No, somebody told me it's $2,000 for affordable.
Yeah, I think the studios even are, either the studios or what, it's in the packet, either the studios or the one bedrooms are about like 1,500. The cheapest unit in there is 1,500 a month.
It's a studio, isn't it?
Yeah, or a one-bedroom, I don't know. There's probably the studios.
1,500, excuse me, a studio.
Next year, it'll be like Manhattan.
Well, that's what it is.
I saw, uh, an article recently that talked about this apartment in Manhattan for $650, but it's literally like a 10 by 10. And you go up to the, I mean, it's tiny, it's a closet.
Is that the one that wouldn't sell?
Oh, no, it's a rental, it's a rental. I didn't, what was the one that didn't sell?
It was one, it was, you know, between two gargantuan buildings and they, they wanted that.
Oh, you know, I saw that article, I didn't read it.
Little skinny thing.
Yeah.
And I don't know how many square feet, but it was very small.
It's the same concept as that with the bed like up above the refrigerator. But it's like you're literally living in a closet. But here, the, the funny thing is, is here is my reaction. I was like, only $650 for Manhattan? I mean, it's.
Yeah.
So, all right, so the, so I have the proximity to established electrical lines, utility lines. I, I feel that, you know, if this project is truly going to be 25% affordable and 75% market rate, there is an inadequate number of parking spots.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, yeah, definitely.
They did, they did talk today about if you want to give back some of the parking spaces for open space, you could do that.
That's what, that's what, yeah, I remember.
Talking about you could decrease the number of spaces if you would like.
Again, that usable open space is 27%. And a buffer is not what I would consider usable open space. And they were unable to identify where on the plan that usable 27%.
Oh, they did, they mentioned it.
But did they point out this is where?
No, no, they, they said, they explained it, they said in the front.
It's the buffer.
No, I said, those are the buffers.
The green space.
Have the kids play between the 28 and then.
Well, there are no kids, there aren't going to be any kids here, so. This is for adults only, apparently.
You could do zip lines around the building perhaps, and that would be very recreational.
What, what is the number of, um, parking?
98 parking spaces, it's, I believe, 1.8 per unit.
And four handicap.
Oh, is it 1.5?
1.5. So 1.5 does work with something that's 100% affordable and has extremely low-income people, households in there because you, you really get into households that really, some do not have cars and some only have one. But if, with 75% of these units being market rate, you're going to have units that have two or more cars.
Yeah, and if you break it down per bedroom, it's 0.8 spaces per bedroom.
So what is, what is like a normal rate for parking spaces?
I think, so Mike Busby from the state commented on this and he said, in the past, it was typically always two, but he has been seeing folks kind of squeeze it lately and.
Right, because there's more low-income housing tax.
1.8 to 1.5 and then.
All right, so, so I, I think we should make that point.
But he said, historically, it's been two, and I, I think he said, at least they've been seeing 1.8, but 1.5 may be kind of more of an extreme.
That's like Yarmouth Commons, Yarmouth Gardens, Simpkins School, those are all, you know, low-income housing tax credit programs with, you know, very low income, moderate low income, low income, you know what I mean? That, that, they, really, I, I've met the households, they do not drive. So they are, they are able to get away with 1.5 parking spots per unit.
Another thing we're missing.
Not market rate housing people.
Right, so I'll, I'll write that up a little bit, okay?
Another thing we're missing is company. Think of Christmas, Thanksgiving, somebody's living there and their family company, where they going to park?
Mashpee Commons somewhere.
And are you comfortable with me saying there is no nearby on-street parking?
Yeah.
Or is it no? I'm going to say there was no on-street parking.
Well, Mashpee Commons had said that they were, said were going to have parking on Job's Fishing when they built the.
But that's for their Chapter 40B.
Exactly.
And they own those parking spots, those are not public parking.
That's correct.
I'm going to say, there is no nearby, uh, public or public on-street parking, public on, off-street or on-street parking.
Off-street, on-street, either, but.
Right, because if you drive there, you see these spots. Those are actually owned, those, um, on Job's Fishing, Job's Fishing, those parallel parking spots are actually owned by Mashpee Commons, those are not public. Because when they did their Chapter 40B plan for that area, you know, people were like, you don't have enough parking. And they, they, they counted the parking spaces that are on Job's Fishing. That's their parking, so. All right, um, so I said that there's limited egress and space in the parking lot, um, to accommodate, uh, the fire ladder truck, especially if called concurrently with, um, ambulances and fire trucks. I think that's really important.
Yeah, definitely.
And I would also just say there is a question regarding FD capacity to handle the height of the building.
Oh, there is no, no problem with that.
I'm not sure that that's accurate information.
You know, I, I inquired because I forgot that they bought the ladder truck in 2024. It goes up to 100 feet.
Well, I'll put that in there, I don't think it hurts that there's a question regarding fire department capacity to handle the height of the building.
Pardon me?
Did they ever receive the ladder truck?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
And I, I don't.
I don't, I didn't really remember it, I know they were getting, trying to get one and, but yes, I spoke to.
I would still leave it to FD just because.
Oh, sure.
It may take two trucks and then the other point that I would mention just from an FD perspective, and again, we don't want to step out of our lane, so to speak, but planning is kind of all encompassing. There, there are the ones who are going to opine there, we're just raising it more as questions.
Yeah.
Question of having the building that close to 28 and whether or not that proposes logistical issues from a public safety perspective for, say, putting out a fire on that side of the building.
Being a state highway, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And it being a state highway.
The fire department did say that they're going to be looking at all that stuff at, at the site.
Yeah, I know, and they're going to be getting us comments, or the select board, they're going to get the select board comments, too. But I, just, planning does still care about these things, so, you know, we don't yet have the input from FD, so we can just raise the questions, you know?
Right. All right, so I have, um, okay, so, um, about the site design, it says, the plans are marked as 27% usable open space, however, there's, there's no area on the plans such marked. With, uh, multiple two and three-bedroom units, anticipated a number of children will live on the site, and there is no outdoor recreational area for them or a playground. All right?
Well, somehow I got the idea that, um, you're not required to have a playground. We don't have any bylaw on that, do we?
No, but it's, 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 it's quality of life.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
But that's not in their plans.
But, but we have required it on other affordable houses.
Where are you going to get the, where are you going to get to outside places for the children to be unless you cut back on the?
Exactly. So the whole, the whole thing, the underlying theme of our comments, I think, should be, there's just too many, too many units.
Yeah.
Having so many units causes all these problems. And I think we should end it with, you know, the state should cap the number of units to a reasonable number so that the site can be a, a, you know, uh, can be eligible for residential living.
Yeah.
You know? I think that, that's our underlying thing, I think.
I just want to make one other comment, if I may. The, Leclerc Village is really set back, one wouldn't hardly even know it's there, they're, they're building a playground, they don't have to fence it in. Given the society, unfortunately, we live in, I would not want to see children who live in our town not being, playing somewhere where a lot of people who don't live in this town, who come to visit and just shop.
Safety.
Would find them, and, and because that is, to me, just asking for trouble. It's this real safety, a real safety issue.
And you know, Lynn went as the chair of the Human Services Committee.
I did.
Mary, the other thing, the other thing they did mention is, they were talking about that there are unknown restrictions in the PNS made upon them by Mashpee Commons. Some of which were for the building materials and the windows and everything to be in keeping with their designs. Their designs don't have anything above three stories. I mean, so there's the dent, the height specifically.
Right.
It's not in keeping with their Mashpee Commons designs.
Yep, right, so I said, while the application includes the Mashpee Commons Residential Design Guidelines, it does not, uh, show any buildings that remotely match to the scale and size of these designs. Yeah. And then I'm going to bring up that, you know, I think this would be much more well-received, something like this. Do we want to bring, so I do want to bring up that, um, that in the past, there has been, well, I, I think that we should, we should bring up that we are not, um, about that thing about the transference of units in and out of the site.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they said no, but.
I think we should, um, I think we should mention that as something that wouldn't be acceptable, that we wouldn't accept for units to be transferred, affordable units should be transferred in and out of the site. So I think we should just conclude it, that in order for the state to create a, um, a proper eligibility of the site, it should be reducing the number of units on the site. We should ask that.
You know, one way I think maybe good to phrase it is to, because I do agree that all these themes are solved by the units, but make that the solution as opposed to the problem. You know, there are all these different problems and here's the solution.
Yeah, keep it positive.
Yeah.
So, um, any, any other comments? Because what I was going to ask, if you would authorize, like me and Karen, to finalize the language.
Definitely.
Is that okay?
Hundred percent.
Yes.
Finalize the language and.
Like in this picture here.
Yep.
Don't you lose rooms, bedrooms, rooms by putting on a porch, which of course makes it friendlier? I mean, we, we can't push the house back, the units back, there's no place to go.
Right.
I mean, right, I mean.
Well, you can, you can flip, you can flip it so the building's on the other side and the parking lot's on the.
I'm not asking them to do 96, um.
It'll be difficult to.
65 units like that, but.
No, I mean, well, the egress.
Okay, we're losing them, we're, by putting these architectural interesting things on.
Right.
You lose room space.
Units and push it towards the center.
So, but my, my, I mean, if I were arguing this point with them here in the room, um, is that, you know, they'll have the affordable units, okay, which will have the same rental income as what they're proposing, but the market rate units, they probably would get a lot more money if it was in a building like this.
Well, we don't know that really, do we?
I have a feeling they would get a lot of luxury.
Now, are these units going to be all through the building, affordable?
Yeah, then they're all mixed in.
Okay, good.
Yeah, there's like, you're supposed to do 25% of each type, have them all distributed on each floor, you know? Any other, um, comments before I hit the save button? Sounds good, I think that's good. All right.
Press save.
All right, and then, um, Karen and I will wordsmith it, get it?
Send me the.
Well, it's, you've had a lot of typos, so I'm going to.
I don't care.
I'm going to rewrite it and then I'll, um, I'll send it to you and we'll. Send it in to, uh, the planning department and then off it goes. And we will have plenty of time because I heard that they gave us a two-week extension.
Yes, so, um, I need to get written confirmation from Mike Busby, but we are, we are going to get an extra 15 days, but I'd still like comments from each of the boards, committees, and departments to be in by July 7th, so that'll give us time to compile.
I think by the end of the weekend, don't you think?
Yeah.
We would be able to get, uh, this weekend, by the end of this weekend, would we be able to get this into Brian? Nope, by next.
I can't.
Okay.
I can't, I really can't, because we got to think about this.
Yeah, maybe, maybe in a week.
In a week.
All right, so by next Wednesday, I'm sure you will have something from us.
That would work great, I mean, next Wednesday is the 25th, so that would be fantastic.
That would be, hey, we're our star board, your star board, so we have to, all right, so that's good. Anything else, Michael? Good, okay. This isn't our first rodeo.
It's just the biggest poll we've ever ridden.
Now, I've lost my, uh, agenda, though. All right, what's next on the agenda? Who has an agenda? Hmm?
Chair's activities.
I wanted to, I wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
Whether we could have a motion on it. I would love to start this meeting at 6 o'clock.
So, um, can we, can we, uh, can we start at 6:30? Because I go, I, I go swimming after work, that's what I live for. I thought you had choir.
I, I, I do, I don't go every other Wednesday.
Okay. Yeah, all right, let's, let's try 6:30 during the summer.
During the summer?
Yeah, maybe during the winter when I'm not swimming.
Can we put it on the next agenda for discussion?
Okay, okay, that's fair.
No, I want to break the, the rules, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, we'll be through, we'll be through the summer.
No, we won't, it's July 17th, we'll be halfway through the summer.
All right, all right, what's the next agenda item?
No, that's me, Tom, or, well, your chair's activities.
Uh, nothing.
Nothing, okay. So, town planner report, I'm going to get through very, very quickly. First is just that in your packets is the updated SHI list, which includes the Leclerc Village units, and so we, the town of Mashpee is officially at 5.18% of its SHI. So congratulations to all of the very hard-working people who came before me and worked on the Leclerc Village project, they're now counted. Thank you all for your dedication. Next is, in your packets is a letter I submitted, uh, to the Building Department, uh, for the Plan Review Committee for comments from the Planning Department on the Shellback Way project. Please, when you have a moment, take a, take some time to look at that. And that, by the way, is up, their DRI review, the hearing is opening up on July 1 at 5:00 PM.
But that's just to open it up?
Correct.
So usually they don't take public comment at that?
Well, I don't know if they plan on taking public comment at that first hearing or not. I will say that, you know, they do anticipate, you know, probably anywhere from three to four subcommittee meetings before a final DRI decision, but that's the first one, so.
Okay.
And then I'm just going to go ahead and skip other miscellaneous items, other than to say there's a number of notices, some of which, uh, are more important than the standard notices, uh, in your packet, so please do take a look at them and just be aware of everything going on. One of which is that there's a notice of public review and comment period for the FY 2025 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Program, Amendment Number 5, uh, in your packet. It's a press release from the Cape Cod Commission and other ones that should jump out at you. So just, please do take the time to review them, but just given the hour, I'm not going to go through them.
Okay. All right, so then we're going to committee reports?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have my, I lost it. Okay, Cape Cod Commission, I think that was, Brian just handled that. Oh, One Cape. One Cape is in September.
Yes.
This year. So the, it's in your packet. It's, who's gone to One Cape? Rob has, I have, it's really great. Have you, Brian?
Uh, actually, I haven't, but I've followed it fairly closely. I intend to go this year.
Yeah, let's go this year.
There is money for you all to go if you want to, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking, reading something, go where.
So the Cape Cod Commission has an annual convention and it's usually two days. Um, and they have keynote speakers, um, and then they do breakouts and they have, each time they have a breakout, they have at least five topics they're addressing. And it, it's, they're really good, they get really good speak, speakers, and I know it sounded kind of boring, but I went to the one about hybrids and electric cars and it was really fascinating to hear what government agencies and municipalities are doing and how they're the, they're the first, like, users of these things. And they had a lot of really good advice. They said, don't go hybrid, they said, go full-electric, they said, a hybrid is a waste of time. I was like, thanks, I just bought my hybrid. But, um, they, it was really very interesting. And then, um, you know, you see, you see the, the planners and the planning board members from across the Cape, um, and it's usually in pretty, a pretty spectacular place.
I, I totally agree with you in the breakouts, and they usually have a field trip if you don't want to attend a breakout. And, and the, I didn't go last, last year, but the year before, uh, and they had the Chatham Wastewater Treatment Plant, very nice tour and, uh, yeah, and then the shellfish breeding plant was the year before.
Oh, really?
That was great.
That is so cool.
Put your hand in the bucket of water and pick up, you know, a half a million oysters.
It's better than putting your hand in the bucket of water at the wastewater treatment plant.
It's in, it's in your packet, I'm so sorry, my packet's all messed up.
Mine, too.
But, um, One Cape, September 16th to 17th, are you in Italy? Are you kidding me?
September, September.
September 16th and 17th at the, uh, Witch Mia Beach Club. Well, we're going to have some fun in Auschwitz, while you're in Rome. Okay.
I, I won't be here either.
Oh.
After that sales pitch, Rob, you're going to France, wow.
Yeah. If the ferries were good, I would be in the UK as well as France, but couldn't, couldn't work out the night ferries from Portsmouth to, uh, to Normandy, so.
Are you going to, you're going to Normandy to see, yeah.
I know, I'd love to go, I'd love to go. Charter Review Committee, uh, we are starting to meet. We set some, we set some dates, um, and, um, we're going to get ready with, in plenty of time for May Town Meeting and there'll be ballot questions. Community Preservation Committee, uh, no meeting, next week. Design Review.
No meeting.
Plan Review.
No meeting.
Environmental Oversight Committee. Uh, Historic Commission.
No meeting, yet, right?
Not yet, one coming up.
And then this Correspondents', and that's it, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of you say aye?
Aye.